Good evening and welcome to the February 14th, 2022 regularly scheduled meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board, which I now call to order. Chair recognizes Mr. Corey Scott for our invocation.
Let us pray. Our Father in heaven, we are grateful together in this planning board meeting of Rockingham County. And we're grateful for the community service that this planning board is able to provide. We pray for this meeting at this time within the laws that we are held to, that we might be able to blend the needs of the individual citizens and the need of the community at large. We pray that this meeting will be peaceful, that we will be respectful of everybody's opinions and views, and that we would be guided by thy Spirit to arrive at the decisions that would be the most benefit for this county and the citizens therein. And then in the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes, and since I haven't been prepared, rather, I move that we just pass on this item.
Second.
Move has been made and seconded to pass on approval of the minutes. Since I've not been prepared, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed like sign. There being no opposition, the motion is approved.
Adoption of the agenda.
Oh, yeah. The next item is adoption of the agenda.
Very quickly before you adopt, there was a typo on the agenda page itself. Case matters before the planning board. B zoning map amendment is case 2022-02. That address should be 265 NC Highway 87, not 65.
I move that we adopt the agenda with that correction as noted.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the agenda with the correction. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed like sign. No opposition, so the agenda is adopted. The following are the guidelines for those of you that wish to speak. Any and all persons who would like to speak must sign the case roster prior to the beginning of the meeting. Additionally, each speaker will be recognized by the board chairman. When recognized, each speaker must approach the podium and will be asked to state their name and address for the record before speaking. Unless otherwise specified, all testimony, evidence, and comments will be directed to the board chairperson. Please remember that many of you probably wish to speak on the same matter with the same objection. And if that's the case, please, when you approach the podium, just say that you agree with the previous speaker. And that way, we won't have to put time limits on anyone that wants to speak. Each case will be presented to this board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief the board regarding the case. Following the applicant's presentation, those who have signed up to do so will be granted the opportunity to speak against or in support of the proposal. If needed, the board chairperson reserves the right to set time limits. After hearing from the public, the applicant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal. This will be followed by board discussion, motions, and voting. At this time, we call on staff to present our first case, zoning map amendment, request 2022-01.
Put the screen down.
Oh, we got it right here.
Well, I'm in.
Oh, is this the roster? Okay.
You need the screen down.
Good evening, everyone. As our board chair said, my name is Lynn Cochran, senior planner here with Rockingham County. Forgive me if my voice, if you guys have trouble hearing me, my voice is still catching up. That virus last week. Our first case is case 2022-01. This is a request for a zoning map amendment to rezone a parcel of land from RA to light industrial conditional district, LICD. Tax pin, you can see here, it's located on NC 770 at 6696, just at the intersection with Ridgecrest Drive. The township is Mayo. And this is a conditional rezoning. I sat and spoke with the applicants at length about what their goals were and what conditions would be suitable and what they would agree to, since this is an industrial request. I will touch on a couple of things in the staff report as I go through the maps. This is the vicinity map. It's essentially located between, halfway between Stoneville and Eden along 770. And here's a zoning map. I wanted to give you a bigger picture of what's going on in the area. You'll see the scale is 0.5 miles. There is light industrial zoning, a couple of parcels away already, which I believe is an automotive repair shop. And then to the west southwest, there's a little bit of neighborhood commercial also to the east. This area is located about three, a little over three miles, did I say? Yeah, north northeast of Shiloh Airport. This is just an aerial and water features map, nothing significant that affects this parcel as far as topography or geography. It is located in the G1 lane class. G1 lane class is essentially low-density development, targeting residential uses for the most part, but clustering commercial uses around neighborhood nodes, as we know, according to the new land use plan. Just off to the west of this, there is a neighborhood node at the intersection of NC 770, Eden Road, and then I think on the other side, Eden Road becomes, oh, I forgot what other road it becomes on the other side. But just on the other side, there is a node just off to the west there. Couple of things I did want to point out in the land use plan was the history of some light industrial uses being approved over time in the past. Specifically, I wanted to read out the compatibility of the zoning action with the comprehensive plan. The plan itself identifies these multiple strategic neighborhood commercial nodes located along primary routes scattered throughout, but mostly rural counties, rural areas of the county. It's located nearby one of these nodes. Generally, the uses that are being proposed with this would be considered by many to be commercial, but according to our ordinance, actually end up being sort of sorted into the industrial lane class versus the commercial lane class. And I'll get to that. Therefore, the request has been for a conditional rezoning. You all have had time to, of course, read the benefits and detriments. We've had probably half a dozen calls or so from folks who are, expressed concern or disapproval of it. Received one email, and I'd say we've had just as many that were just simply inquiry calls wanting to get more information about what the request was about.
Could you elaborate on the nature of the objections?
So far, the only specific objections that I've heard, I was out last week again, I apologize, so I didn't get to hear any calls last week, but this I had heard were concerns about, sort of the typical concerns we hear with something like this, potential for increased traffic and safety issues, potential for impacts on the character of the area, being an industrial parcel. It's the only two specifics that ring out in my head right now. I do believe several people signed up and will be able to express what their concerns are.
If I may, real quick.
Sure.
Last week, we got, I had two phone calls. One did express the same safety concerns. Another one expressed environmental concerns for the type of development with the automotive nature, the oil, grease, things like that, and their concern about runoff and other potential effects to the wells and water sources in the area. One of Lynn's maps pointed out that the water features, there are some in the general vicinity, but none directly across the parcel.
And on that point, I'll just go ahead, because we did get that call, I remember us discussing that call. Our ordinance doesn't really have any rules in place specifically to manage that sort of waste disposal and that sort of thing. That falls under multiple other different umbrellas from folks that we worked closely with. Our code enforcement officers in solid waste, our code enforcement officers in other types of waste, and if there is an issue or a concern of groundwater contamination or ground contamination, soil contamination, that would bring in NCDQ. So I just wanted to point that out, even though those are certainly valid concerns. Our ordinance, as far as zoning approval, does not deal with those topics specifically. Does that make sense?
Yes. Another question I have, looking at the zoning map, I think, yeah, that's the one right there. The light industrial property located just to the right of the crosshatch property in the question, did you say that was an auto body business?
I'm 95% sure it's automotive body.
Is it still active?
Yes.
It's an ongoing concern?
Yep. It's active. The signage at the road, it's a well-kept property. We drove by when we placed the signs to look at it. So it is in operation. I'll also make a note about, since we were talking about topography, that this property itself, at some point in the past, sometime around the mid-'70s, according to tax records, some sort of structure was erected. This was prior to zoning law in the county. It looks to be commercial or automotive in nature. It's hard to say for sure. Some of those who've lived here for a while might know. But that structure is still there and is proposed to be used as part of the site plan. Either at that time or sometime thereafter, a berm was pushed up along the entire perimeter along NC 770 that is now covered with mature vegetation. So there's a dense soil berm and vegetative screen already in place along the primary route.
Is it such that it's not visible from the street?
It's highly screened. I would say this time of year, you could see some things because the trees are partially defoliated, but when in leaf, it's a dense screen.
I would agree.
So after talking about this with these folks quite a bit, within the, you know, scope of our ordinance and within the scope of what our recommendations can and can't be, we are recommending approval, but we're recommending approval of a very, very pared-down list of uses. This list of eight uses is gleaned from all of the potential uses. In the light industrial district, they identified these specifically. I want to make a point about use number six, an automobile salvage yard. This will exclude parts picking, sales, and exchange that you would typically think of at an automobile salvage yard. The salvage yard in this case is a towing and service repair, towing and storage of vehicles, wrecked and non-wrecked, most often which are to be, according to the applicant, most often which are to be then shipped off-site within 24 to 72 hours for either sale at a totaled automobile auction, that sort of thing. There won't be salvaging of parts for sale to the public. There will be automobile repair and service that takes place on the parcel, and those parts may be used as part of that. And there will be automobile sales to the public. The applicant does have his dealer's license for dealing and sales of automobiles, so he's got those covered. So we narrowed it down to that list of uses from the entire selection. We've also asked, staff has recommended that we maintain a minimum 50-foot property line buffer for all structures, any new structures of any kind. The structure that's out there now, I believe, does meet that setback. It's setback fairly far from 770. All lighting standards in Article 5, as pointed out, must be adhered to. These are indirect light and shielded lighting. All lighting must be directed away from adjacent property owners, that sort of thing, and where there is not already existing vegetation. Let's see if I can, these slides don't show it very well on the aerials, but on the western edge, on the northern, the western edge, there's not a lot of vegetation. On the border with 770, there's significant vegetation. And on the back property line of the parcel, there's significant vegetation. Additional vegetation would likely have to be planted along the eastern edge with the adjoining neighbor there. So overall, we feel like enough information has been provided to evaluate the case, and from a staff viewpoint, recommend approval with these significant conditional restrictions placed on there. After this evening, the case will go, oh, I'm sorry, there is one last thing I wanted to point out. The applicant did include this site plan, 6676. These are representations of trees. She had, she joked with me that she had troubles getting her trees the right size, trying to use a little graphic design program, but these are the proposed vegetative buffers that are already there. Where you'll see the gap with no trees on 770, that's the primary ingress egress, which actually already exists. It needs some improvement, but it's already there. And that would bring it into the parking area there in front of what would be the primary body shop.
Okay, I just have two more questions, Lynn.
Sure.
First of all, assuming that this is approved and then subsequently approved by the commissioners, will the site plan be subject to TRC review?
Yes.
Okay. And secondly, I notice that we have two applications here for the same property, one from Bobby Hilton and one from James Newman.
Oh, no, clarify that. Bobby Hilton and James Newman are the current owners of the property. The applicant's, Randy and, oh, I'm sorry.
Bradford.
Randy Bradford, yeah, is the applicant. He is proposing to purchase the property from the two owners. He also signed as applicant to the conditional uses in agreement. But the, those are the two owner's signatures. We included that in the packet, just to confirm that since this is a conditional rezoning, the owners are aware of and have agreed to the conditional requests as required by 160D.
Okay, so the sales condition on the rezoning?
Mm-hmm.
Speaking of rezoning, for those of you in our audience this evening, whatever the planning board decides tonight, whether we approve or disapprove this application, is not the final step. The final decision on all rezonings in the county rests with the county commissioners, and they will hear this case on what date, Lynn?
March 21st. I honor about March 21st, given the, as the board of commissioners' schedule allows, yeah.
Okay. So if you disagree with what this board does tonight, you do have recourse to attend the meeting in March and discuss your objection with right to the county commissioners. Just wanted to let you know that you still have an avenue left for appeal. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Cochran from the board?
I have one.
I have two. Go ahead. No, you go ahead. No, go ahead.
Chair recognizes Corey Scott.
So I was noticing in the GIS that the property that's in question here is covered under the Shiloh Fire Department, but the property next door is under Leeksville. Is there a concern about having an automotive facility that far away from the, from the fire, where the firehouse is?
That is generally something that would come up during the technical review committee process versus the rezoning process. It's not a bad question, it's a very good question. And this is one of those areas in the county where you have that distinct border between two fire department areas, which we often see. And sometimes that can be a confounding factor. Given that he has his dealer's license, those requirements will all have to apply to as far as safety. And any structures that are being used for anything would have to be inspected and approved by building inspections and by the Fire Marshal's office also. I can say that much at least.
Okay.
But I think the rest of it would likely be dealt with at the TRC level. Now, Dan River Water does run down 770. I cannot confirm if hydrants, how many hydrants are in place there, but it would not be infeasible to request that a hydrant be placed there since water is there. That would have to do with a discussion with Dan River, but that's more of a TRC kind of thing.
Okay. The other, the other question is that there's a creek running below the property. Was there any concern topography-wise of the property in question running, being uphill from where that creek is running along there? Or is there enough buffer in there, in your opinion, that it's not going to ever, that any kind of concerned discharge or whatever would not get to that?
That goes back to that point that I made earlier.
Yeah.
In some part, we don't have guidelines or teeth, really, in our ordinance to enforce something like that, other than our required riparian buffers. Now, this is in the Dan River Eden protected watershed. It's a protected drinking watershed. It's a watershed number four, which is sort of the lowest tier of protection that there is. The 30-foot riparian buffer is a county requirement above and beyond.
Yeah, they're way far from that.
And they're pretty far above that, too. As far as the utilities themselves go to that point, the, there are rules, of course, when it comes to well and septic systems. Those are governed by environmental health. Planning and zoning doesn't have anything to do with those. But of course, we do consult closely with them, especially during the TRC process when a project like this is being evaluated. So that, if that issue were to come up, they're going to guarantee that all state guidelines are met for the safety of any wells or septic systems and that sort of thing. At the time of application, sometimes it can be expensive to run water lines to your property. Sometimes some folks find it less expensive to drill a well. There was no decision made as to what might happen, and I'm not sure if there's an existing well on the property or not yet, since it was developed so long ago. But given that, and given that there are other industrial uses in the area, the parts that we can look at and the parts that we can condition as best we have, I think we have. But when it comes to some of these more granular sort of environmental concerns, we end up relying on our partners.
Okay. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Cindy Hayworth.
Thank you. Lynn, in your, in the staff notes and analysis, it says this parcel is not located exactly near one of these neighborhood commercial nodes.
When I say exactly, it's not exactly at that intersection where that node is. And I thought this map captured that node, and I apologize, but it doesn't. If you're looking at the map sort of left to right, towards the left, towards the west, you'll see Eden Road and how it curves up shortly out of frame there. It joins 770, and that's where there is a commercial node. So it's about half a mile of away from one of those commercial nodes.
Okay. But it speaks of commercial nodes, but this is industrial, light industrial, and it says the land use plan does not directly address such a scenario negatively or negatively.
Yep.
So, but then, when you go under to the recommendation, it says as a whole, this zoning amendment does not conflict with the intent. But if the intent is, is to put these kind of zonings in these nodes, I'm a little bit confused on that.
I'm sure.
The other thing I wanted to ask is, under the applicant's conditional uses, and you had mentioned in your summary that you had talked with the applicant and the salvage car and that type of, type of thing that might be on this property, that they would be removed within 24 to 72 hours, but that's not one of the conditions?
It is not, because we didn't necessarily agree to that tight of a condition at this point, because these are uses that he, they know of, that they plan, but the exact length of time for how long a vehicle may sit in any given condition on the lot could vary significantly. This was just a discussion of the typical scenario for what would happen with a towed and stored wrecked vehicle. That's where the question came from. I asked him specifically, okay, so you own a towing operation. When you bring the vehicle to your facility, you know what happens at that point? And he explained to me that usually within a few days, that's what happens, or it's removed to be completely disassembled and junked, if not sold, but not in every case.
If it's not conditioned, it couldn't be enforced, it could sit there, it could sit there forever.
That's because in the, in the UDO, under conditional uses, there are no time limits. They're not specified. So it'd be strictly a voluntary act on his part, whether or not to remove the vehicles in one, two, three, four, or five days.
Areas of the UDO in the past and some areas now do include time limitations, but this section of the UDO doesn't. And it can get a little confusing when we're talking about an industrial use versus an institutional versus a commercial versus a residential versus farm. Some of them aren't spelled out clearly in land use plans, nor are they spelled out clearly in UDOs as to exactly what is meant to be exactly where. A land use plan is generally a guide. It's a steering mechanism for the most part. So sometimes it requires interpretation and relation, and that's, we do it a lot, actually, you know? And when it comes to something of this nature, which is, when I think of industrial, I think of heavy, let's say something like heavy industry, asphalt manufacturing or something like that, this has nothing like an impact that industry would have. And if it were just automobile sales, that would actually be just commercial versus industrial. So since it combines some of the things that are allowed only in industrial, it was the sort of, often what you have to do in a UDO and land use plan is find the closest match. If you don't have it spelled out exactly, they teach you this in planning school, as it were, that if it's not exactly spelled out in your ordinance, you look for what is your closest match, because you can't really say just knee-jerk, it's not in our ordinance, so no, you can't do it, because that's a good way to get in trouble.
All right.
Does that help?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any further questions for Lynn? Chair recognizes James Fink.
I just wanted to piggyback off what Corey asked about the environmental health aspect of it with the wells and the, and the septic tank systems and the potential for infiltration of the water, the creeks. It looks like from, when I'm looking at the map, it's at best seven, 750 feet to the streams, but that would be covered through environmental health going through TRC, correct?
It would, yes. And our local representation, excuse me, local representative for the NC Department of Environmental Quality also sits on our TRC and would be involved in any TRC review of this. And that would be one of the number one things, reasons to take it to TRC, because other than that, the scope of this project really isn't large enough to warrant a TRC review, except for two things, and that's facilities, utilities, and environmental stuff. DOT access might come up. They'll probably need a commercial driveway permit, something like that.
Which just seems like-
That's just speculation.
So we don't know how many vehicles potentially could be stored on this lot, so the potential for runoff, in my opinion, could be, you know, or it could be substantial, just depends.
It's there now.
Can we get that information from the applicant when he?
Right, thank you.
And I was going to make that point myself, actually, that's something that I, that I had discussed with the applicant, that he didn't give me a specific number for like an estimate of how many cars per average would be sort of resting on the property. It is not, this, that part is not beyond the board's purview to put a reasonable limitation on the number of, as long as it's rational and based in concerns. That is not a condition that is beyond the board to request to be added. A limitation on a certain number of vehicles for whatever good reasons there might be out there to do so.
I just had a strange thought that, you know, the footprint, while it looks like, say, it may allow for 30, 30 cars, you- say, it may allow for 30, 30 cars, you stack them three high, all of a sudden, you've got 90.
Oh, yeah. That's, that kind of thing is something to think about.
I've seen salvage yards where they do that.
It's, to my understanding, there's no proposal for a crusher or whatever those things, the real name for those things are. It's just for storage.
Crusher, I like that one.
Yeah, why not? Crusher.
Self-explanatory.
It crushism, it's a crusher. I know. But yeah, it's, it's something to think about, too.
I was a professional wrestler, that's, that's what I'd want for my nickname.
Crusher.
Okay. Well, there being, any further questions for Mr. Cochran? All right, thank you, Lynn.
Yeah, sure, thanks.
Could we, is Mr. Bradford here?
No, they did not attend tonight. I know they definitely planned to attend the Board of Commissioners here. I thought they had planned on being here tonight.
Then without the applicant here, we'll hear from the people who have signed up to speak on this case, and it looks like the first name on the roster is Mr. David Brooks. For the record, please state your name and address.
My name is David Brooks. My address is 110 Ridgecrest Drive, Stoneville, North Carolina.
Okay, sir. And what is it that you'd like the planning board to know?
So my wife and I own the property directly across the street on the north side of 770 in Whispering Pines. I'm not sure if you guys are aware of the topography of the area, but it's kind of like a hilly area. So this property is on a hill right across the street from us. Our property is also located on a hill, so we have a direct view into the property. So our, our concerns is with this conditional zoning, what's to stop the applicant from putting whatever there once they get their zoning in place? You know, we, we don't see this as something that will enhance the property value in our area. It's essentially residential, and we are aware of the muffler shop down, down the road east of us going toward the-
Oh, it's a muffler shop that's down? Oh, okay.
You know, with a auto salvage business, that's a 24-hour day operation, they could be in and out of there with diesel trucks, day and night, going to get wrecks, bringing wrecks back to the yard, setting up storage, handling them, beating and banging on stuff. I think all the residents in the area would not appreciate having to put up with that on a daily basis. Traffic's already a concern there. That stretch of 770, a lot of people, when they're stuck behind somebody slow coming out of Eden or Stoneville, that's a prime passing area. There's been a number of accidents there. You know, when people go in and out of our neighborhood, you know, we've had a number of close calls, and, and there have been a number of wrecks at that intersection of Ridgecrest and 770. So we think that's a, a safety concern.
The, didn't they just lower the speed limit on that section of road to 45 miles an hour?
No, it's 55. Right after you get west of, of the, well, yeah, where Harrington Highway crosses there at Shady Grove Road, it turns into 55, and it's 55 until it gets to the outer limits of Stoneville. So, you know, with the potential loss to property values with this going on, the nuisance of it being a 24-hour day operation, we're, we're requesting the board disapprove this request.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Brooks?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm having a little trouble reading the handwriting on this next one. Is it F.A.I.G.S.?
Fargus.
Fargus. Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am. Please come forward. You're next on the roster. For the record, please state your name and address.
I'm Dorothy Fargus from 122 Ridgecrest Drive. I too, I'm right on the other side of him, and-
Right across the street?
Across the street. And I know he's talking about there's a berm and whatnot, maybe down at the bottom where 770 is, but we have a housing development that that hill right there, we kind of set up higher than they do, and we can see in there, I mean, even kind of above some of the trees that's there. But it's not too bad, like what it's there now, but I hate to think how it could be. But I mean, we can see that from our kitchen window, our front porch, our front yard, our driveway. I took pictures today, which I know I can't really, like, show you, but it's like, because it's a big hill, you know, and you can just look right over there, and you'd have to build a tremendous fence or something. I mean, it would, and that is the only way in and out of Whispering Pines. And it's like, we're trying to be a nice neighborhood. We have some restrictions in there. We can't have chickens or cows, or have a trailer pull in their backyard, or certain things like that. But I wanted to mention that, like, the view is like, it would be bad for us. Property values would go down, and I know the noise, and I know you can hear the noise, because it used to be the Good Time Express right there, and then after that, it was the 11 Unlimited back in 1978. That's how long we've had that house. And, and somebody just could be hollering, hey, Joe, and you could hear it over there, because like, here's Ben, here's us, and then there's 770, but it's like, it's like right there, if you can kind of catch my drift, you know? And it's like, the noise, I couldn't imagine metal, you know, like, you know, banging and hollering and stuff like that, day or night. And I also want, I did want to ask about the rezoning, if it's rezoned for this, say, then, then people purchase it, they buy it, they put this here, what about, like, say a year or two years, they go out of business, is it permanently rezoned for industrial, or does it go back to residential? How does that work?
It would be zone light industrial.
So it would be-
Because what, what the applicant is asking us to do is to change the zoning map.
Yeah, Brooks is there, yeah.
It's a map amendment that we're, we're voting on. That's how zoning takes place. We change the zoning classification of the property on the map.
Okay, so then it's kind of permanent till somebody requests-
Until somebody comes forward and wants to, we call it downzoning.
All right. Well, I just wanted to let y'all know, though, that there is a nice housing development there, and that is our only way in or out. Somebody comes up there and looks at a house, and they like it, they want to buy it, when then they come down the hill, all they're going to see is that. There's no other way out of there. And that's it. It's right there.
Are there any questions? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Mr. Steve Baker? And for the record, would you please state your name and address?
Yes, sir. My name's Steve Baker, 6750 NC 770, Stoneville.
What is it that you'd like the planning board to know?
My property is right beside of this. I just bought my property a year and a half ago. There's 26-acre farm, and I bought, my friend was, he was on his last days, and so he asked me to buy his, he gave me a deal and sold me his property so I could look out to the farm. There's nothing but a well there. I actually have plans to come and get my zoning changed to residential. It's always been some sort of a business in this building that I bought, it's 5,000 square foot, but my plans were to change it into a, a nice home one day. It was just like, right at four acres, and I thought, wow, this would be nice. Live up here on my buddy's farm that, that's been there 80, he, his family had it 85 years. But my concern is, I've been into cars all my life. I was a junkyard dog. I lived in junkyards. I, I, I play around with the '30s hot rods now, and I, I build some of those. But I know you can ride into Eden, and you can go on Monroe Street, it's a disaster. You can ride to the traffic circle, it's a disaster. A junkyard, I remember growing up in Clarence Hale's junkyard that started out as a towing business. It started out as a garage, and now it is, from one inch of the property to the other inch to the property, to north to west, it's cars stacked on top of each other. I'm old enough to realize that if this is approved, there's no one on the board that will ever monitor this. It's just not going to be monitored, it's going to be a free fall, and I know that. The last thing I want to do is to start off on a negative note with my neighbor, but I don't have a choice. I mean, if he was here tonight, I'd shake his hand and say, can we work this out? But I, I don't want to spoil his dreams, but therefore, I don't want my, my dreams spoiled as well. And so we are concerned, because we are, there's, there's three pieces of property on this 40, on this 26 acres. We're all on adjoining well. I just put a new well pump in three weeks ago. It's been, it's been there for 80 years. The well has, it's worked great. I have walked through the woods, I have, I've, I've spent a lot of time looking to see how far is this little creek from this property, because, because in, being a junkyard dog, you have to step over the grease and the oil and the transmission fluid and the, and a freeze. You have to. And I'm just concerned that our well, our only source of water, is going to get disturbed. It may not get disturbed in 30 days or 60 days, it may not get disturbed in five years. But I know that this kind of business would, would total the, the value of our property and the value across the street. It just will. I'm just trying to be real here, that's all. And I know Lynn says that he's, that he is for it, but I've talked to some people across the street in Whispering Pines, and, you know, a lot of people don't want to come forward. They don't want, they don't want to be known as, I don't want to start no trouble, but, and I don't want to. And I want to have a good neighbor next door, but, but I'm concerned. And, and, and we talked, I talked to Lynn about a buffer over the phone. What is a buffer? What is a fence? Is it going to be, could it be a, a four-foot fence? Could it be a six-foot fence? Is it wood? Is it metal? What's the fence, what's a wood fence going to look like in three years? Could be laying over, falling over. You see what I'm saying? It's, it's, it could be beautiful for, for the first couple of years, but after that, what's it going to look like then? What's it going to be like to have pit bulldogs, or doublemans, or, or even a nice collie running around barking, and, and I don't know, I just don't, I would hate, I hate to spoil his dreams, but I hate to spoil mine as well. So, you know, I just wanted to come over here and, and share that much with you, because we only have a well. Now, he did bring up Dan River Water, Running Water. I've done that homework. There is a, there is a meter right in front of this proposed piece of property, so my thinking is, this proposed piece of property is on Dan River already, or there would not be a meter right in front of it on, on the road. I have tried to get Dan River Water, and it's sad that I've got to go to this person that's going to buy this property and, and ask him for a, a pass to run my water line through his property. Going up against him ain't going to get me a water. So, so I've talked to City Plumbing about running that eight-inch main down to my property, and it's 20 grand. And so, you know, it's, it's, it's just a battle all the way around, that it's sad that it's turned out like this, because I was hoping for a neighbor that we could get along great, and, and he'd give me a pass to run water, an easement to run water to, to these businesses next, I mean, to the properties next door. Now, the, the exhaust center that's right across the driveway from me, that's on the 26 acres, Tim opened that up as an exhaust center, and then it didn't make it too well. So Tim works for the City of Eden now, and he might do one or two, three exhaust a month. It's not, I mean, he's going to take his sign down, because he, he couldn't make it. And so, so, and like I said, I'm, I will probably be here in the next couple of months asking to get my land rezoned for residential. And so-
Any questions for Mr. Baker?
Just one.
Chair recognizes James Fink.
Are you between the applicant and the exhaust shop? Is that your property in between those two?
I am right between, yes, yes. And I'm, I'm right next door to this piece of property.
Got you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I do have a question for Mr. Brooks. Are you, is your community served by Dan River Water?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it comes off of a feed on 770?
Yes, sir, it, it comes right down 770, and we're on Dan River Water. And I don't, I don't know if the development just to the west of us, off of, off of-
Yeah, we have it.
Off of, okay, so they're on Dan River Water also.
Okay. Thank you. The last person to sign up for this case is Mr. Richard Lloyd. And Mr. Lloyd, if he would, for the record, please state your name and address.
Richard Lloyd, 177 Laurel Bluff Road, Stoneville.
And what is it that you'd like the planning board to know?
Okay. I grew up in the automotive business. I know this business very well. For one, environmental. A junkyard requires a liner put underneath, according to the EPA. Talking a half-million-dollar liner at least, and even that does not stop the runoff. I happen to be down the street about 500, 600 feet, and that creek runs 315 feet along my property on 770. Trust me, we will have runoff. They are up on a hill, I'm down the hill, and the water will run right down into the creek. It'll bring rodents, lots of them. You'll have trucks going in and out, doing damage to the roads, that's more road upkeep. The noise, there's going to be a lot of noise from it. We have a very quiet neighborhood. The smells from it, people torching things, stuff like that, fire danger. There's all sorts of things that go along with this business, and it's a real detriment to where we live.
Are there any questions for Mr. Lloyd? Okay, thank you, sir. Any discussion about this amongst your members?
Do we, do we have any information? I mean, everybody said the property values are going to go down. Do we have any evidence?
No. Unfortunately, we're not permitted to consider opinion evidence unless it's backed up by a traffic study from DOT or something like that. It's just the way it is. However, we, we are allowed to consider your concerns, other concerns that you've mentioned.
I'll state the obvious. I'm perplexed on why the applicant's not here. I mean, I would think that if you have a, an interest in redoing something, that you'd want to stand up and tell us why it's so great, and we don't have the opportunity to ask that question tonight.
Hmm.
I would point out, too, that this piece of property, I'm pretty familiar with it. It drains off significantly on three sides of it, pretty much.
It does.
It does. It's got a lot of fall to it, going toward that creek, it does.
Well, being a member myself of the TRC, for those of you in the audience who doesn't know what the TRC is, it's the acronym for the Technical Review Committee, and it's a committee of about, what, Lynn, 14 members? And representatives on that committee are there from the planning board, which is yours truly, our community development director, county engineer, North Carolina Department of Transportation, who oversee all the driveway permits and that kind of thing, Fire Marshal's Office. I can't off the top of my head recall all the different agencies. North Carolina Division of Environmental Quality, school, school board, our school district is a member. So for some of these larger developments, we have to consider things like the necessity possibly to build a school to accommodate big developments and so on and so forth. And this committee is tasked with reviewing site plans that are submitted to make sure that they meet all the required- that they meet all the required criteria, both statutory and requirements from our own Unified Development Ordinance in the county to make sure that they're not causing damage to anybody. I was not aware that 770 is so low compared to the elevation of Ridgecrest Drive and the property that's being asked to be rezoned. And I kind of have a visualization of what you can see over the top of the trees. I mean, that makes sense to me. Are there, are there any motions?
I'd like to make a statement, if you don't mind, before you have a motion.
Chair recognizes Cindy Hayward.
I, too, am perplexed why the applicant is not here, and that the community is represented to some of the communities that are here, and we're here for both. We're here to make a decision that hopefully helps the applicant, but also takes into consideration what the neighbors and the communities around any structure will see. And I actually drove out to this property, and I do know how it's up and down. And what, in looking at these properties, and of course, you want new businesses, but my thinking is that it has to congeal with the neighborhood, and it has to be a subsidiary service that the neighborhood would use on a frequent basis. And you also have to think, like Ms. Vargas said, what's the worst thing that could be here in the list of things that have been conditioned? And what would it look like to the people that are around this? And I know there's requirements in any construction on buffers and screenings, but buffers and screenings, especially if they're foliage, they're different from season to season. And what you might not conceive in the summer, you see all winter. So, I try to take all of those things into consideration because the people have to live there every day. The owner can walk away from that business at night and go to someplace where it's not there. So, my main concern is that the applicant's not here, and the other concern is what effect that this could have on the community. And I appreciate you coming out tonight to let us know your concerns.
Mr. Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
Chair recognizes Mr. James Fink.
After considering the Rockingham County adopted comprehensive plan for Rockingham County Planning Board recommends denial of case 2022-01, this rezoning is not consistent with the adopted Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. This zoning amendment is not supported by the intent and descriptions of the G1 land class. The board considers its actions in denying the proposed zoning amendment to be reasonable because the size of the parcel is not appropriate for light industrial conditional district. The proposed uses allowed in the district are not appropriate for the land, considering its effect upon the landowners, the neighbors, and the community, and the property for the request abuts properties that are currently zoned residential agricultural, residential protected. Nearby parcels are zoned for a mix of residential, agricultural, commercial, industrial uses, and the light industrial conditional district rezoning is discordant with the zoning characteristics of the area. On balance, the following factors: one, the size of the tract in question; two, the compatibility of the zoning action with the comprehensive plan; three, the benefits and detriments resulting from the zoning action for the owner of the newly permitted property, the neighbors and surrounding community; and four, the relationship between envisioned permitted uses and the uses currently present in adjacent tracts weigh against approving the proposed zoning amendment.
Second.
A motion is made and seconded to deny this application, 2022-01. All those in favor of the motion to deny, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like, sign. There is no opposition, so the decision of the planning board is unanimous to deny this application at this time. And let me remind you one more time that the applicant has the prerogative of appealing this case now to the county commissioners, who have the final say. And if you would like to attend that meeting, to continue to raise your objections, you're welcome to do so. It's a public meeting. Thank you very much.
You said this is going to be March 21st?
I believe he said March 21st.
It'll be March 21st. That's the, the board of commissioners hear these public hearings at their second meeting.
In this room, 6:30 PM.
We'll send out another notice regardless. So, if that date or time does change, you'll get another notice of when it will apply.
And not just because you turned it down. I'd like to thank you for taking the time to write out and look at the property. That means a lot. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Staff will please present our next case zoning map amendment request 2020-2022-02. Got too many twos in there.
Right?
22?
When do we get to 2022-22? Because this...
Now, you're really trying to confuse me.
Cases 2022 and dash 02 and dash 03 are essentially identical to each other. They're in different areas of the county. And I'm sorry, that NC 65 was a typo. It's NC 87. It was one of my famous copy-paste errors that you guys know about all too well. Again, look, I even put it in my slide, so there you go. Knowing for a fact that this is over in Williamsburg, right close to the edge of the county.
Technically, I'm the one who made the slide. I copied and pasted the report, though.
But the problem originated with... This request has been made by Mrs. Lori Robertson Johnson. She owns the property located at 265 NC 87. This is for a request for a straight rezoning from residential protected to residential agricultural, very similar to those that we have seen quite a few of recently.
Is this one of those cases that falls in the trap of the RM?
This would actually fall outside of the trap of the RM/RA that we're going to fix. And I'll let, Marcy's going to speak to that in a moment. This property is currently zoned RP, and so it wouldn't be in that RM/RA class that we're getting ready to fix with the text amendment. This is one of those that we're just going to have to look at on an individual basis, since we're going to keep the RP zone, I think was our last discussion, to simply for single-family residential only, and look at them on a case-by-case basis. But here is where the property sits, right between Cherry Grove and NC 87, which it says clearly on the map, not 65. Everything around it, for a large part, is on residential agricultural. Though the zoning here, especially along 87, has an overlay of RP, there is quite a bit of manufactured housing out here when you look at the map, especially as you're headed southeast into Caswell County in this area. You'll also see across the street a small neighborhood commercially zoned property. Some years ago, I don't think any, maybe, Matt, you may have been on the board. This was 17 or 18. A lady came in and requested rezoning of this property. It was for electronic gambling. Anyway, it didn't, didn't happen. But I think there may have been a little restaurant in there for a while. I have not been out there recently, but the request basically is for this property here to rezone from RP to RA. And since it is an existing lot of record, it doesn't have to meet current dimensional standards or density averaging. As long as the property can be served somehow by water, what I call water in, water out, then it's developable. This is just an aerial shot. This is a rural area of the county. It's in the 02 land class. It's kind of near the edge of a G1 land class. I'm not sure what that crossroads is over there, but it's a little bit closer to Reedsville. And these are sort of the standard statements that we've come to know about the 02 land class and the county land plan, that it's characterized by low-density residential development and agricultural uses, providing primarily for those uses. And the land use plan suggests that these areas should generally be zoned RA residential. Agricultural housing variety is targeted as a major goal of the land use plan. And though this is a nonconditional rezoning, the primary reason for the request on the applicant's part is access to a wider variety of housing options, as we've heard quite a bit about over the past six to eight months.
Just out of curiosity, where would the driveway be for this property? On 87 or on Cherry Grove Road?
The property did have a structure on it at one point, I believe. And I believe that there was a driveway off of 87, but technically, since she has access to both, she could probably pull it off of either one. And I don't have my GIS tools right in front of me, just my PDF tools.
We've got one here.
Oh, good. Can you see it a little better?
Yeah.
GIS, you can really see a little bit better.
It looks like it's off of Cherry Grove.
Is it? Okay.
Okay.
Then I got it backwards in my head.
Okay.
That wouldn't be the first time. But, yeah, that's essentially what this request is about. And I'll leave that there. No special conditions, no special issues with topography or anything like that. It's pretty straight up from those that we've seen lately. But I'll be glad to answer any questions.
So, this is almost on the county line, is it? Where's the dot again?
Yeah, it's quite close to Caswell County line. The area of the map that sort of fades into whiteness, that's Caswell County. Let me see if I put in my staff report how far away it is from...
Can you go back one?
Yeah. Thank you, Jim, for pointing that out. It's about 1,200 feet west of the Caswell County line. I said east, but meant west. Y'all know I have issues with east and west. I don't know what it is. I swear. I did go to school for geography, for actual geography.
We'll start you off slow. You can look at this, you can look at this map and play that game called Connect the Dot.
Put some W's and E's on there for you.
Goodness. Anyway.
Any questions for Mr. Cock? Okay, thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
We do have a couple of speakers that have signed up. Mr. Al Simpson. I hope I got you right, your name right, sir.
It's Al Fong, it's short, he might call me Al.
Okay.
Al Fong Simpson.
For the record, could you state your name and address?
265 87.
Okay, and you're Mr. Al Simpson, right?
Al Fong Simpson, really.
Okay. And what is it that you'd like the planning board to know?
I want to put another trailer. I had a trailer there, but when I moved back here, it tore down. And I talked to the guy downstairs, and he had to be rezoned to a marginal home. Now, marginal home, what you consider as a new one or usual or what?
Well, the, we're about to change a zoning district later tonight. Marcy, can you speak to this, please? The RM district?
Yeah, we are going to do a text amendment, or propose a text amendment for the RM district, but there is no RM in this particular vicinity. But we would be allowing manufactured homes back in the RM district. So, rezoning to RA or RM would be possibilities to put up manufactured homes.
Everything that's there. And it's been zoned when the first put it there, so many foot from the center line back for a case of new highway. I'm connected on both sides, Cherry Grove and Rockingham. I'm right next to Ms. Robertson. That's my lot right there.
Yeah, this one right here.
Your question is essentially about the fact that your parcel is zoned the same fashion as Mrs. Robertson's right now, as in the RP district, like Mrs. Robertson. As it is, yours would only be suitable for modular or site-built. That's probably the information that you may have gotten. If you would want to put a manufactured home out there, this is the process that kind of sort of has to be looked at for that to maybe happen, would be changing the zoning nature of your neighboring parcel.
I was told downstairs, I put 350 to get it rezoned, right?
That's the application fee for the rezoning. We could sit down and have a meeting with you in the offices.
He said he didn't see no reason why I couldn't give you a zone, you know. That's what he told me downstairs.
Well, that's what we're here to decide.
We can make an appointment with you for that, to have a discussion in our offices. Okay? Thank you.
For the record, could you please state your name and address?
Lashay Brandon, 1300 Tribby Drive in Raleigh, North Carolina.
Planning board to know?
I'm speaking on behalf of my mama. She is Lori Robertson Johnson, and I'm just here to support for her to get our land rezoned due to my mama homeless, and with us not having the funds for her to get her house on the land because it's been zoned, we can't afford like a modular home, but we can afford a double Y. So, like, that's why I'm here to speak for my mom, help her out.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Brandon? Very much.
I will add to that information. Your mom had talked about that with me. She's been through it lately. She has spent some nights in her car. She's been in a pretty rough spot, and this was the solution that we came up with. So, I do think that's a important piece of information to include.
She's in disability right now, so it's only me and her, you know, trying to get stuff together at this moment, and it's just rough.
Very much. Members, this is another one of those cases where changing the zoning from residential protected to residential agricultural will just open a different kind of opportunity for affordable housing for the applicant, and I see no reason why we shouldn't approve Any discussion? Okay, then we'll need a motion to do that.
I'll do a motion.
Chair recognizes Mr. Corey Scott.
After considering Rockingham County adopted comprehensive plans, the Rockingham County Planning Board recommends approval of case 2022-02. This action is consistent with the adopted Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. This zoning amendment is supported by the intent and descriptions of the 02 land class. The permitted use in the residential agricultural district is, are compatible with the character of the existing developments on adjacent parcels and in the neighborhood. And the proposed rezoning conforms to the guidelines, goals, and requirements of the Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan O-2 land class and the future use map. The board considers its action in adopting the proposed zoning amendment to be reasonable because, A, the size of the parcel is appropriate for the residential agricultural district; B, the proposed uses allowed in the district are appropriate for the land, considering its effect upon the landowners, neighbors, and community; C, the property for the request abuts properties that are currently zoned residential agricultural and residential protected. Nearby parcels are zoned for a mix of residential, agricultural, commercial, institutional, and industrial uses. The residential agricultural rezoning is not discordant with the zoning characteristics of the area. On balance, the following factors: one, the size of the tract in question; two, the compatibility of the zoning action with the comprehensive plan; three, the benefit and detriments resulting from the zoning action for the owner of the newly permitted property, the neighbors and surrounding community; and four, the relationship between the envisioned permitted uses and the uses currently present in adjacent tracts weigh in favor of approving the proposed zoning amendment.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the application for rezoning. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the application for rezoning for case number 2022-02. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like, sign. Since there's no opposition, the planning board approves the application for rezoning. Now, folks, you'll have to, you don't have to, but you may attend the commissioners' meeting on March 21st along with the other case. And the final approval on our recommendation that the property be rezoned will be voted on by the commissioners.
You'll also get another notice in the mail like you did this time. I was just saying, everyone will get another notice in the mail before it comes time before the commissioners' hearing. Yeah.
You're very welcome. Have a good evening. And now staff will present our last case, zoning map amendment, case number 2022-03. I have 2202. Boy, am I old.
It was a tough week last week, all right? The typos are abounding.
Helps on the way, Marzy.
There will be less in the future. There's less than there used to be.
Yeah, this one's even more straightforward.
Yeah.
Than that one.
Um, Mrs. Ramona Jesse. Actually, the same day that Mrs. Robertson came and evened out in my office, they were like boom, boom, the same afternoon. I was like, what's going on? Tax pin 892300969888. It's on 649 Massey Road in Williamsburg also. Sort of out the way of that one, but not as far out. It's essentially a little bit less than halfway between Reedsville and the Caswell County line, sort of headed due east out Massey Road, which is a state road, but just a short little stub road there. This is an odd little pocket of RP zoning. If the purple stripes weren't there, you would see that that's just a yellow box, just like the other yellow box above it and the other yellow box above it. So why these areas of frontage on these lots was chosen for zoning for RP and not the entire lot? Or if that's a map slip error or what the previous zoning history was is not terribly clear to me. It does look like it was pretty clear that the entire lot of the one across from Scott Road was to be zoned RP at some point, probably back in the late 80s when all of these districts were laid out. But this one's a little, confounds me a little bit. But it's surrounded essentially by residential agricultural. Mrs. Jesse has requested rezoning from residential protected to residential agricultural for the same allowances and options for housing. There's nothing really standing in the way of that. According to the land use plan, oh, I'll just show you the aerials right quick. Just a mostly rural and very lightly populated exurban area. The land use plan, she's also in the 02 land use class, which strongly supports RA zoning, very low-density residential uses and agricultural uses. This area is served by individual well and septic. I believe some components of that may already be present on the parcel. I'm not 100% positive, but I believe they may be in the discussion that I had with the applicant. Again, here are our points from the land use plan that are related to these cases here that are coming up. 02 land class primarily provides for low-density, single-family residential uses, and we'd like to target housing variety as a major goal of the land use plan. And again, this is a situation where we've got that RP/RA conflict with a history of some... The development history here is different than the development history, I'm going to back up for you, here. This is the map for the Robertson rezoning. And if you look, traveling from the corner of Cherry Grove and 87, running southeast, there's quite a few manufactured homes out there despite what the zoning says.
Yeah.
You see what I mean? This one's a little bit different in there that the housing density in the area is lower, but there is a bit more in the way of detached, single-family residential, although there are others, some other mixed types out there. And it abuts essentially on three sides parcels that are zoned RA, so. I'm going to answer any questions.
Chair recognizes Corey Scott.
Did you get any calls or emails from this one?
There, we got a few inquiry calls. I did get one or two calls with folks who were voicing concerns, but I'm just going to be completely honest, I'm not sure, clear on what those exact concerns were. They didn't seem to pinpoint a specific problem or issue, and sound, and this is purely conjecture, sounded like it may be a neighbor slash family sort of dynamic going on that's sort of getting pulled into this rezoning request. That's just my summation of what it may have sounded like to me, and certainly not saying this is what's happening, but we didn't get any expressing concerns about manufactured homes going in the area specifically or anything like that, no.
Because of the driveway, because where that property's at, there's a couple of nice homes actually built around there. There's one with the pool and stuff like that. And so I was just curious to see if, you know...
When you look at, that's why, yeah, when you look at a map like this, it's a fair question to bring up, and that's why I pointed that out, but no specific...
Since none of those neighbors are in the, sitting here, I guess that their concerns were not significant.
Yeah. I have not heard from anyone specifically saying, I'd rather not have a mobile home there or anything like that.
Any other questions for Lynn? Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, this sounds, members, like a type of request we've had many of in the past, so that the applicant can take advantage of a housing opportunity that's a little more financially beneficial to them. Any discussion? In that case, we'll consider a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Chair recognizes Cindy Hayward.
After considering Rockingham County adopted comprehensive plans, the Rockingham County Planning Board recommends approval of case 2022-03. This action is consistent with the adopted Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The zoning amendment is supported by the intent and descriptions of the 02 land class. The permitted uses in residential agricultural district are compatible with the character of existing developments on adjacent parcels and in the neighborhood, and the proposed rezoning conforms to the guidelines, goals, and requirements of the Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan 02 land class and future land use map. The board considers its action in adopting the proposed zoning amendment to be reasonable because, A, the size of the parcel is appropriate for the residential agricultural class district; B, the proposed uses allowed in the district are appropriate for the land considering its effect upon the landowners, neighbors, and community; and C, the property for the request abuts properties that are currently zoned residential agricultural and residential protected. Nearby parcels are zoned for a mix of residential agricultural, commercial, institutional, and industrial uses. The residential agricultural zoning is not discordant with the zoning characteristics of the area. On balance, the following factors: One, the size of the track in question; two, the compatibility of the zoning action with the comprehensive plan; three, the benefits and detriments resulting from the zoning action for the owner of the newly permitted property, the neighbors, and the surrounding community; and four, the relationship between the envisioned permitted uses and the uses currently present in adjacent tracks weigh in favor of approving the proposed zoning amendment.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the application for case number All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like, sign. Since there's no opposition, the vote is unanimous, and the zoning request is approved.
Who wants a second?
I thought that was you. Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Thanks.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is to consider a text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, which Marzy's going to explain to us. All right. And let me just say that this recommendation comes after a meeting of the, you recall at the previous meeting, I requested that we reinstate or reconvene the UDO Advisory Committee to consider this change to the UDO before it came to the planning board. So what you're going to hear is what is a summation of that meeting. Mr. Marzy, you have the floor.
As my thunder's been stolen, as was previously mentioned, now, as I brought up at the last meeting, you know, we've had a lot of this problem since the UDO got amended back in August, that RM removed manufactured housing. That is consistent with the land use plan that was adopted back in May. However, in my opinion, it wasn't the right time to have made that change. There was no forethought. There was no public outreach. There was, there just wasn't any planning involved in the plan. We did meet with the UDO Advisory Committee. We laid out several options for them, you know, change it back, roll the clock back, amend the back to where we allow manufactured housing in the RM district, go forward with what the land use plan called for and try to rezone all the properties that had manufactured housing on them from RM, which would be a long and arduous task, or just do nothing. We round tabled it. We talked about possibly also including RP or not, but ultimately, we decided with this option, just to kind of roll back the clock, go back to the way it was before, make it a little bit more fair for everybody. The intent for the committee and the changes was not to make a hardship upon the people. So with their suggestion and our recommendation, we are requesting that y'all recommend to the Board of Commissioners to put back into the RM district Class AA manufactured housing dwellings and Class A manufactured housing dwellings to be listed as permitted by right with developmental standards, the same developmental standards that would apply to RA as well. And pointing out that should this recommendation be approved, it would automatically amend the land use plan with the removal of that policy, which isn't to say that it couldn't be put back into place in the future. Once more, thought has been put into how to actually implement a change of that nature.
Let the members know that if we don't go along with this text amendment, what's going to happen is we had two cases tonight where rezoning from residential protected to residential agricultural was requested solely for the purpose of having an opportunity to, for applicants to purchase and install manufactured housing on their property, where without this text amendment, we're going to have to hear every single one of those cases. We'll have to continue doing that. So that's number one. And number two...
If I may, real quick to echo that a little bit, I've got 11 people lined up wanting to do rezonings if this doesn't pass. So, I mean, it's...
So my recommendation when the UDO Advisory Committee met was that we go with these text amendments. And it was pretty much agreed to unanimously at the meeting, so I'm asking you to consider approving these text amendment changes.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Corey Scott, please.
So the ones that we talked about tonight were increased housing options and related to RP. So how come RP's not included in this discussion?
RP doesn't permit manufactured housing.
The previous version of RP only permitted it under special uses. We did feel that, and in my personal take on things anyways, less special uses, the better. The intent of the RP district was to set aside a single-family detached residential district. We felt to keep it in that character, that yes, while we had a few cases tonight that were RP-related, the majority that we see coming for us are RM. And the bigger hurdle to meet our land use plan was that we have subdivisions completely made of manufactured housing that are RM. We don't have that in the RP district. The RP district manufactured housing is very selectively based or was preexisting to the zoning at the time. And while, yes, tonight, we had a few of those cases, those aren't the norm for our requests.
Well, I mean, the last meeting, we had a couple, too, that were RP/AA.
Yeah, and it's going to continue.
It's probably going to continue as well.
In fact, it's not just going to continue, it's going to grow because that's the only other alternative these people have, other than a modular home or stick-built home. And I'm just going to, I'm just going to admit that, you know, when we did the UDO, perhaps a terrible mistake was made in not allowing for the opportunity for people to purchase manufactured double-wide homes. And so not only are we, in a sense, discriminating against those people, but we're discriminating against the companies that build these things. I mean, it was all unintentional, but that's the net effect of what happened.
And I'd like to point out also, real quick, the major goal for us to do this was not to hinder people who already rezoned and who had land specifically for manufactured housing. In the RP district, where there is existing manufactured housing, those are special-use cases, and we'll always be able to have that manufactured housing. The intent wasn't to alter our districts. In that case, if, for instance, if we, you can make a recommendation if you want to add in RP in some measure, but it was a special-use permit prior. For it to be a special-use permit again with the same regulations, it doesn't make any sense not to make it permitted by right, but making it permitted by right dissolves the line between RP and RM. And, you know, basically, we don't, we'd have a zoning classification that doesn't meet the needs of that zoning classification. It's just, it's probably not fair, but it's just the way it was all designed. But that's up to y'all's discretion. Our recommendation solely is for the RM district.
Any other questions for Marzy? Thank you. I move that we go ahead and approve these text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance.
I made just some handy dandy, pre-written motions.
Oh, how nice. I like when you do that.
And they're shorter.
They're a lot shorter than my consistency thing was.
Okay.
No, I was just showing him where it was.
Oh.
Yeah.
I move that the planning board recommend to the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners approval of the text amendment to allow manufactured homes in the residential mixed zoning district as this amendment is in line with the county's goals toward affordable housing and finds that it is in the best interest of the public's health, safety, and general welfare. Further, the planning board finds that this amendment is not consistent with the land use plan. All, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the text amendments to allow manufactured homes in the residential mixed zoning district. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like, sign. With no opposition, the vote is unanimous to recommend that the county commissioners approve the text amendment. The next item on the agenda is a further fine-tuning of our bylaws. The next item on the agenda is a further fine tuning of our bylaws, which became necessary based on some changes that the county commissioners have made. And if you look at Section 2, powers and duties, there's notice in Section Number 1 and Section 2 is just language change. In Section 3, under membership turns and vacancies in the blueprint, you'll notice it says, "A majority of board members, four or more, shall have an established residency in Rockingham County for a period of at least five years." This is a change that commissioners would like us to make. And it doesn't affect the current board, it's going forward. So if we don't have four members at the current time who have a residency period in the county of at least five years going forward, that'll be one of the requirements for people seeking appointment to the board.
What was the reason for that?
Well, the commissioners responded to public input, and people in the, and citizens from Rockingham County were concerned that in order for the planning board to be more closely attached to what's going on in the county, it would be better if they had some history or some longevity in the county for that to, to take place, so.
I think they didn't want the upstarts from moving in from Guilford County.
Shame on those people, those, those interlopers from Guilford County.
Yeah. So sorry.
On the next page, we've restructured the language a little bit.
Did that.
Accusal from voting, and alternate members may be appointed as seated members sooner if vacancies among board memberships occur. So if, for example, somebody resigns from the board, we can make an appointment quicker to, to someone. All members appointed to the planning board shall swear an oath of office. We've all done The, without limitation for reelection on the term of the chairman means that the chairman can be reelected. What else? A lot of these changes you'll see, we're changing them from the planning board director to the community development director. That's the title, new title of this office that Marzie holds. All right, under, we've changed the word bifurcated to dual meetings, make it a little easier to understand for people. Board secretary, little separate minutes. No, we put them all in one. We're changing the quorum from five members to four. There's been, since I've been chairman, there's been two instances where we couldn't even get a quorum to, to a meeting, one of which was, regrettably and embarrassingly, one of the biggest meetings in the audience that I've ever seen here. We must have had 35 people here and we could, didn't have a quorum and had to send everybody home. And people were here from Atlanta and Raleigh and, I mean, all over the, and it was, it was not, it was not pleasant.
Was that one of the ones last year?
Yeah. We're going to start asking alternate members to attend the meetings. Currently, we have alternate members, but they are not really alternate members. They'll respond in a pinch if, you know, we call them, but technically, they're not. We need some alternate members is what we need. And we want to be cautious about where these members come from, because right now, for example, there's three of us on the board from Eden. And we don't want to overload the board with members all from one community because it, I guess the accusation of bias could come in, or we're not familiar with the outlying areas. It would be nice to be, to get some, maybe somebody from Madison or, or, you know, Bethany Township or something like that, you know, out that way, where Colebrook is. I know you live out that way.
I'm in Stoneville.
Stoneville, yeah. So.
You're, you're packing the, packing the board? Is that what it's called?
Yeah, we don't want to do that. Don't want to do that.
Meeting.
Let's see what else we have here.
There's three. Yeah.
What? Dylan's from Reno.
You are also on the court. Yeah, okay.
Me and Julie and Paul, that's what it is.
The other changes on the next page are really kind of language changes. Again, the page after that, which is parliamentary procedure reading down, you'll see several changes in blue. Well, we, again, the quorum is restated and then title changes to community development director from planning director. And that's it.
One thing I would point out is on the next, last page, next to the next last page, sorry. I should have numbered these. About quorum, taking the quorum down to four for majority vote cases, yay, everybody's for that. That will mean that for, no, so they could take it, I'll take that back, so never mind on that one. Number two, it's been confirmed, and I talked to John Morris, too, our attorney, and Paul looked at this, too. We all wanted to make sure we all understood the law correctly. And this is what we have practiced at different points, and I think we were practicing, but we definitely have to practice it. The motions for the Board of Adjustments for variance, only for a variance, you must have four fifths of all seated members present to cast a vote, and that's six.
Yep.
Yep. So that's just confirming that we need six for those cases. But everything else is a majority vote.
We cut the end time of the meeting to 9:30 from 10 o'clock, but we're also changing to 6:30 start time. We've already approved that. So I'd like to move that we go ahead and make these changes to kind of clean up our bylaws and to change the quorum. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the changes to the Rockingham County Planning Board bylaws. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, like sign. There being no opposition, the changes to the bylaws are adopted. We have no new business, so we'll move on to old business. And the old business, I guess, is a review of the amended planning board bylaws.
You just did that?
Yeah, I know. So could we have a motion to adjourn? Don't all vote at once. Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. All is favored, please raise your right hand. Thank you very much. And happy Valentine's Day to you all.